I'd like to call the order of the policy subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting. Roll call, please.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
Great, thank you. So we have one item on our agenda, the policy manual materials were, have been distributed to the committee and I think are available here. And we have a guest from MASC, Dorothy Presser. Can you please join us? So I think the goal tonight is to take stock of where we had gotten on this term and solidify that and then tee things up for moving forward. So could you just give it up to the committee as to where we are in the process?
Sure.
Thank you.
We did a lot of work over the past term on sections A, B, and C, D, and a little bit, some on J, which I believe you've already addressed through the, through your discipline code. So there were some, there were policies that in each section, in some sections, there were a couple that were added and a lot, there were a number of policies that were deleted as being no longer relevant or redundant or just quotes from the law. And then there were a number of policies in each section that were revised to bring them up to date, to reflect maybe changes in the law or regulation throughout since they had last been instituted or had last been reviewed.
Thank you. Thank you. So do we have any questions? Yeah. Member Sadowite.
And one of the things that we did see, just going through these sections, which I'm gonna put out there that we're probably gonna see the rest of the sections, are we actually had procedures in here when it should just be policies. And so that was an area we had to address as well.
Right.
So I would expect the same issues going forward as well.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Yeah, I mean, there were some things that were clearly procedure that we really tried to keep out of policy manuals so that they can be changed by the administration as appropriate. And there were some, I mean, there were some policies that were simply quotes from the law, which there's really no reason to have, just a verbatim quote from the law in your policy manual.
And aside from that, obviously, you need someone on our side to collaborate with. And some of the hurdles were, some of those positions weren't filled, is that correct?
I think, you know, there was one point when we wanted to sort of keep going and there was, for instance, talking about transportation, but at that point, I think the transportation director was wearing about three or four other hats at the time. And this was not a top priority at that point. So, you know, that, it has been wonderful when I've had the opportunity to work with members of the administration to kind of get things all set up and ready for you to look at. That seemed like a really good way to continue the process if we can do it, understanding that there are sometimes other priorities of the administrators in needing to, that need to be addressed.
And we're trying to go in alphabetical order, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would it make sense to switch it up the second half of this or to keep it?
Well, I mean, not really. I think that Superintendent Tutwiler might be the best person to sort of guide who might be busy, less busy, available, not available. You know, I don't feel like I can call up and say, hey, it's time to do this section of the policy review, help me out, without some direction from the superintendent to say, you know, please do that.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I mean, I think, given that where we are in the calendar, I think it's worth, because of the time and attention we put into, in the agreement, we, consensus we really got to on these sections, that we formally adopt these sections and then we leave it to the next committee to pick up where we left off. You know, I think it's, we've all made the commitment in the beginning of this process that we wanted to have a clear and transparent set of policies and that was something that we didn't have access to because of the issues over the years of establishing what was, what was actually the governing policy. And so I think we've made a lot of progress on that. I think we've tackled some of the meatier sections so that the, hopefully, the remaining sections will, will go smoothly for the, the next committee.
Yep. There are just, there are some policies in each section which still have holds on them that will still need to go back and address, but, you know, I have pretty, I have good documentation on everything for every policy that we've talked about. So I know which ones need to still, you know, are on hold and still need to be, still need to be addressed.
Like a couple of them, Jared, actually, were with Attorney Mahos to review.
Right.
And I know that not all of the ones that we, the disciplinary ones, have we already adopted those? Is that why they're not in here?
Say that again.
The disciplinary ones? So they're already adopted?
Yeah. I went back and looked through a number of your minutes and found where the discipline ones had already been adopted.
Okay, perfect.
Right. So we have been going alphabetically except where there were particular issues where we had to address and a consensus.
With Attorney Gallo.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
And those were formally adopted at that moment.
Good.
These are the ones that were no longer formally, had not been formally adopted.
Formally adopted, right.
And, you know, this was, this was intended to be a multi-year process. We have a multi-year engagement. So I think that all sounds good.
So what do we do with the ones that are in review? Do we want to say that we're gonna adopt the ones that have been formally, I guess, vetted? And then the ones that are still in review that we'll go back to those? Is that how you're gonna present the motion?
Yeah, I think, maybe, maybe a motion could be that we move to adopt these proposed policies that are agreed on and refer those that are under review to the next policy subcommittee.
So the language in here is you put certain things on hold. So I would say the motion to accept the policy changes except for within the packet, except for the ones that are on hold, for legal counsel to advise.
Something like that.
Can I just also, in the motion to delete the ones that, so assuming the way you phrased it, that would include deleting the ones that you already, that should be deleted?
Correct.
Yep. No, that's a good point.
Because that would fall within the change, the deletion.
Yep.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, please.
And to move it to the full committee.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
All right, that's all the business we have.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dorothy.
You're welcome.
I think, is it Donna or Lorraine personnel?
To bring personnel subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole to order. Roll call, please. Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Mayor McGee?
Present.
Hey, I think we, I'm not sure, does the entire committee have copies of the surveys?
I have, we have a printed version, I believe, from Mary, and we also got emails from Teresa.
Okay. Seeing that this is Ms. Gailey's, had put a lot of work into it, yes, Ms. Gailey?
On Thursday of last week, Dr. Tutwiler, myself, and Mr. Ford, and Ms. Jewels, we met and we discussed the survey that I had written up and we changed it like Dr. Tutwiler wanted to be on him. So it would help us, as Mr. Castellanos wanted, help us with our goals. So you have, the copy that I would like to see go through is the school committee survey on, on the superintendent. Might want to add that word "the." And I'm gonna read the introduction to you. And it's, "The Lynn School Committee is requesting a survey to receive input from administrators, teachers, and staff on Superintendent Tutwiler's performance this year. We need this data to assist with this year's evaluation in the following areas," excuse me, "culture and climate, climate continued cycle of improvement, district initiatives, internal and public support for facility needs, changes to the curriculum to assure alignment of curriculum instruction and assessment needs, effective teaching techniques are in place, that all instructional resources are used to maximize student achievement, and include feedback from the administrators on professional development needs for their individual schools," excuse me, "instructional technology support for our school communities, supervision and support of schools, ethical practices promote moral and ethical practices in every classroom, every school, and throughout the district. This survey will be taken anonymously and the superintendent and the school committee members can see the actual results, how many participants and the levels of participants to help with the evaluation of his goals. Nobody's name is exposed, truly anonymous." So then, if you read through this, I go on to identify your work level. The first category, and this aligns with Dr. Tutwiler's, correct, Dr. Tutwiler? Instructional leadership. The leadership promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. And there are several questions. And I use the, I use a multiple choice scale and Likers scale. You can't see the blocks here, but it's strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree, and not applicable. And then at the end of each section, there is a comment box. And I want to thank Dr. Tutwiler for bringing it to our attention, that it would be very difficult if we had every single block have a comment. So, then there's the second section. That's the third.
Yep.
After that is management.
Management, yep.
On page five. This one.
So under management, the education leader promotes learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by insurance, ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. And then the last section is on.
Page nine.
Okay. Family and community relations. The superintendent promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnership with families, community organization, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its school. Overall, it's a 23-question survey. It goes with three comment section, and it moves pretty quickly on the prompt as you go through it. So, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Sadowite.
Thank you, Chairperson Capola. I, I know that when we discussed sending this to personnel, we had talked about having a survey that is not just for staffs but also for the family and public. So I'd like the family and community relation question and how short it is. If we can just send that part out to the families to get their input on that section, that would be great. And then the rest could be sent to the staff of Lynn Public Schools. I would, I would enjoy that.
Say that again?
The entire survey should be sent to staff, but section family and community relations should also be sent to the family and community for input as well.
Yes, but the staff will also get it.
Correct, yep.
Perfect.
Does that make sense, Dr. Tutwiler?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
What is the second single sheet that looks like a survey as well?
Oh. That second one was the original 11 questions that we had, and we went over and we wrote it down. This was what we went over Thursday. And then Dr. Tutwiler asked me to review these, so I did. And I thought, using his suggestion of instructional leadership, management and family and community relations would make it easier for us to align his goals.
I really appreciate the collaboration on this and working together to come to a final draft. Thank you.
Attorney Nicholson?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So I want to thank Member Gailey and Dr. Tutwiler for taking time to, again, to collaborate like Member Sadowite just mentioned. Definitely, it was, you know, it's well noted and well put together. Do we have a timeline or any type of strategy on what that implementation looks like of the survey that we could talk about briefly?
We discussed putting it out after the holidays in January.
Okay. When do we start the review, superintendent's review?
Whenever you're ready. I mean, ideally, ideally, I mean, we want to onboard the new school committee members and get them oriented with that process. Probably we'll partner with Dorothy toward that end, but, you know, it'll be up to the committee. I would say shortly into the new calendar year would be good.
Because historically, that's when it's been, except for last year because of COVID.
I think this happened at different, I feel like this happened a little bit earlier than that, some year, like one year was in November, maybe two years pre-pandemic. Then last year was kind of an off year. This year, kind of an off year. But, you know, I'd say January, February would be good.
I want to get some. Yes, Ms. Gailey?
I would like to do it sometime in January, but that's what I need the feedback of the committee on. When's a good time? We should go on the calendar and look it up and see when a good time to have this survey go out, like a date in January.
Dr. Tutwiler, was this something that we were gonna release during schooltime for them to respond? So could we do it on a half day, like a Wednesday?
You could.
What are the half days in January?
I might have to get back to you on that one.
I can check for the calendar on Lynn Schools. One second.
Yes, Mr. Castellanos.
Dr. Tutwiler, do you have any recommendations in terms of what, what timeline would be preferable for all of us? I think from the committee, for yourself, is there any?
Timeline for the survey?
Yes.
26th is the first half day?
January 26th.
Okay. So, I mean, given that the first available half day to allocate some time for this, and remember that, is that the first day of Hope and Healing? Okay. We'll be starting the, or continuing the Hope and Healing Professional Learning Experience at that time. But I would say, you know, if we're gonna back out a piece of this that's gonna go to families, you can do that, you know, right after, right after the winter vacation, maybe that first week. Leave it open, you know, seven to 10 days maybe, with a reminder. And then for staff, I mean, we could, we could look to the 26th. I will note here, and I appreciate Member Gailey embracing the feedback around narrative feedback. I just want to name that there are three opportunities here, which, you know, are fewer than what we started with, but, you know, we have a little more than 2,000 staff members. If half of them respond and actually write something three times, that's a lot of narrative data to pour through. So you want to give some time after the 26th to actually do that analysis. So I would say maybe shortly after February, sometime in February. It'd really be up to, to the committee and also sort of determining what time is needed to do the analysis of the survey.
When are we gonna be doing your goals?
You already did them.
No, 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 but I mean, like evaluating you.
It's up to us.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm, my recommendation would be sometime after this survey is done so you can bring this to bear on that. I would say sometime in February.
Because not only is it helpful for us, it could be helpful for you in drafting future goals.
True.
So if we have the 26th, sorry, Donna.
That's okay.
The 26th for the educators and families, the first, maybe seven, so when do kids get back from winter vacation?
Third.
The third?
Third.
Maybe from the 5th to the 13th, families can fill out the survey with that reminder, like you said. And then you get back to the committee, maybe the second or the first meeting in March, with the data. That should give you enough time, right, to, to get through it from January 26th to all of February to at least a week?
You want me to analyze the data?
Someone has to.
I mean, I'd be happy to do my own analysis, but I think, you know, this is really the committee's opportunity to.
So how much time do you think you'll need to analyze?
I think it depends on how many, probably a week or two. I wouldn't disagree with that.
So do you want me to put it in the form of a motion? Donna?
Yes, can I just get a clarification? When you were saying about orientation with Dorothy Pressman, was Dorothy coming in to do orientation? Is that what you're saying?
No, that was just a high-level suggestion that before the school committee with the new members do the evaluation, that she orient them on that process.
Okay, all right. I thought you meant she was gonna be doing their orientation for.
No, no, I mean, just for the evaluation.
Join the committee. Okay, okay. All right, is, would somebody like to put it in the form of a motion then?
Yeah, motion to approve the school committee survey on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Dr. Tutwiler.
I just want to make one point about this. I mean, there are, this one, this survey is longer than the original one that, that was made up. And so I just wanted to offer the opportunity if the committee felt, because there is such thing as survey fatigue, and people sort of, you know, get tired as they're going through, you know, a longer survey. So I just wanted to make sure or see if the committee wanted to remove any questions. Number one. And number two, part and parcel of the conversation last time was connecting the survey, not just, you know, in concept, but specifically to the evaluation. So those headings that Member Gailey read are headings from the superintendent's evaluation. There's four standards. I did not include a section for professional culture because I felt like the elements of, you know, cultural proficiency, communication, commitment to high standards, that those were represented in other questions. I just wanted to make that point of clarification now before we get way down the line and be, you know, there's an observation, like, hey, there's four standards, where's that fourth one? It's actually blended in.
What I decided to do was to keep them because when I took a test survey, it didn't, it took less than five minutes. So I just thought that the thing that takes up most of the room is the multiple choice of the six questions, and that takes up most of the room. So that's why I stuck with what we have.
And if you take out the open-ended questions, it's only 24.
I'm sorry?
It's 27, but the three of them are open-ended. People, people don't have to really add additional.
They don't, but I, in my experience, you know, you learn a lot when people have the opportunity to respond in a open kind of fashion.
Any other questions that we have? Is there somebody who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the school committee survey on the superintendent as presented by Member Gailey, with it to be released to the staff of the Lynn Public Schools on January 26th, and the family section of the survey to be released to families the week of January 5th to the 13th with a reminder email with the data to be provided to the personnel subcommittee, which would then present to the full committee the first meeting of March 2022.
Roll call, please.
Oh, I moved to the full committee, sorry.
Yes.
Miss Capola?
Yes.
Ms. Gailey?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowite?
Yes. Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're just about a quarter of, so I don't know if anyone signed up for the open mic from 6:45 to 7 o'clock. So we're gonna get started on the open mic. I think someone has signed in, so we'll get started. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed, designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand someone's point of view, points of view. Committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as possible or as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public School District and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule a speaker out of order if the chair feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Again, we're at 6:45 and going on 6:46, and the sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting, which is scheduled for 7 o'clock tonight. So far, Sung?
I want to thank Dr. Tutwiler and the school committee members for listening to my concern tonight. I am here tonight to represent Lynn parents' food mission and to remind all that our children and all the 17,000 students deserve better. The school lunch program being served by Revolution Food is still remaining a huge concern as far as safety and quality. So here are the facts. Food quality issues, including taste, is the point where my dog won't eat the meat ordered by one of the parents. The second one is lack of the system to file issues and complaints. The third one, we need communications in various languages on how to express the complaints. Fourth, fresh food, how do we accomplish that? Have there been any changes, improvements to our own internal quality control? What steps are you taking to, to how to make our lunch program better? Are we following the best practices? I am here tonight to remind that our kids deserve better. Our goal is loud and clear. We want food made fresh and served on same day. They deserve same choices. No more discrimination, no more fraud, waste, and abuse in our school lunch program from the first to the last student. Safe edible and FDA food code standard food for every 17,000 Lynn Public School students from now on. I hope that Lynn Public School system take a hold of the reins of this situation before any more children get sick. Thank you so much. I hope you guys take the situation very seriously.
Dr. Tutwiler? Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate and respect your passion on the topic. Would it be possible for me to take those notes? Because I'd like to respond to you, some of the prompts that you mentioned.
Absolutely.
There actually are responses.
Yes.
So I'd be happy to send them directly to you.
Thank you so much. I truly appreciate it because I feel like it's a one-way. I would love to have it both ways, you know, communicating in that direction. I truly appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Please. Yeah, please. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'll respond.
Seeing no one else has signed in, we will take a 10-minute break and we will
Seeing no one else has signed in, we will take a ten-minute break, and we will begin the full meeting at seven o'clock. I ask everyone to stand and join me in a salute to the flag of the United States of America, please.
My pleasure. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask that you remain standing, please, and join me in a moment of silence in memory of John Johnston, a teacher at Pickering Middle School who passed away on November twenty-third of twenty-twenty-one. Thank you. I ask for a quorum roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Ford?
Present.
Member Gately?
Present.
Member Nicholson?
Present.
Member Sadoway?
Present.
First on the agenda is accepting of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the curriculum subcommittee meeting on November eighteen, twenty-twenty-one with the correction of adding President Michael Sadoway.
Second.
To the second, roll call required with the, with the change that's included in the motion.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of meeting for the policy subcommittee on November eighteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the eighth special meeting with executive session on November eighteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gately?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadoway?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is Dr. Tuttwiler, an update on the effort to increase the diversity of the staff.
Happy to speak on this, and just want to name in the very beginning, this is under the section of presentations, but it's not quite that, it's more an update. One on request by a member, that's the next agenda item, and this one is one that I said I would come back and give an update on, but want to be clear that I intend to provide a more polished set of information with the artifacts that go along with the evaluation. So you received some data about the racial diversity of our staff, I believe it was last, early this week, and then there's another set in your data, I asked that you use the newest set. There was a professional group that snuck into one of the categories that shouldn't have been, so I just want to make sure you have clean data. For the past two years, in partnership with you, we've posted a district improvement goal on increasing the racial and linguistic diversity of our staff. The goal calls for at least, an increase of at least one percent each year. In the latest iteration of the goal, there was a request to break down the professional categories of our staff. This has been provided for you. What I intend to do is just provide you a very high-level synopsis of the data, but first, I want to go back to the theory of action that we developed on this initiative during the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year, and it is as follows. If the Lynn Public Schools clearly articulates core values within which is a statement of value of diverse staff, actively and purposefully recruits candidates of color, ensures that equity work is the responsibility of all educators, engages in promising research-based practices in its schools aimed at meeting the needs of all learners, especially those historically marginalized, and develops support and feedback mechanisms for staff of color, then it will be better positioned to recruit, develop, and retain a diverse staff. Whether by design or circumstance, we've engaged in many of these activities over the past two years that are reflected in this theory of action. This includes, but is not limited to, pursuing and securing state grants designed to fund strategies to increase the racial diversity of staff, partnering with agencies such as Teach for America and Latinos for Education to create a pipeline of staff of color, deepening the partnership with Salem State University, formally joining the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education through which we sponsored our first diverse hiring event this year, a couple of weeks ago, it was virtual, engaging district-wide professional learning around race and equity, developing a standing affinity space for staff of color. Because of these and other activities, I can say with confidence that we've exceeded that goal of increasing the racial diversity of our staff by at least one percent. In fact, for teachers, we've increased the diversity of staff by three percent, principals by ten percent, making for the most diverse building leadership cadre perhaps in the district's history, and we've increased the racial diversity in other leadership positions by seven percent. This category captures all building and central office leaders who are not principals. Historically, paraprofessionals have been the most racially diverse professional group by far. You will note that this, in that data, that this is the one group that trended in the opposite direction. This is due in part to the fact that many paraprofessionals were hired as teachers this year. Nonetheless, that professional group still remains, by far, the most racially diverse among all other professional groups. The work continues, and we are by no means spiking the proverbial football before the goal line. Nonetheless, I do think it's important to celebrate the efforts district-wide. We've taken a substantive step toward becoming a more racially diverse professional community. The point here was to update you, and as I said in the beginning, I'll provide a more robust and substantive set of data with a narrative when we get to the evaluation process.
Member Sadoway?
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, for presenting this data. I think that, you know, four years ago, we spoke about it and how important it was to make these important improvements in the district, and I know that we worked hand-in-hand with the unions to get to this particular point. I do have just two questions. Where do social workers and other staff fall in these categories?
Teachers. So in the, when you get the finalized data, what I'll do is provide you not just, this is high-level percentage, but I'll provide you a breakdown of each category with the actual numbers and descriptions of who fits in each category. But teachers includes teachers, social workers, special education-related service providers, and so forth.
Awesome, thank you. And then, how is this data compiled? Is it, is the data taken off of the applications at the time of applying, or is it something you asked afterwards?
So, I believe it's by regulation, every district is required to collect demographics data of its staff, and if you go on the DESI website, they don't break it down by professional category, they just say, hey, everybody, here's the racial breakdown of a district. But in the application process, that's where that data is captured, you know, staff identify or choose not to, which some do.
Being on the interview committees multiple times, I've seen all the dozens of applications, and I do see that that is a part of it. I just wanted to make sure that that's where it's captured. And we have obviously room to grow still, but these numbers are definitely good. I appreciate it, thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, Dr. Tuttwiler.
I just want to add, I mean, that's an important, all of the questions are important, but that's an important question about how the data is captured. You'll note in the goal, because we do think it's important that the district be diverse racially, but also linguistically.
Of course.
Capturing that data is a work in progress.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Member Castellanos, and then Member Capola.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tuttwiler, for elaborating and providing this, this information, and, you know, just, you just can't say how, how, how much work that you guys have put into this. You know, four years ago, you know, partnerships and development with some of the, you know, the conversations, and to see that come to fruition is, it's wonderful. I have a question around, maybe an update around the SSU fellowship program that we rolled out last year. You know, when I, when we think about partnerships, it's important to think about sustainability. How do we, you know, create, and I know you, you mentioned Latinos for Education, SSU, a couple, you said it's going to be tied in with state grants. Could you just elaborate more on where we're at with some of these partnerships? Are they looking to, you know, when they look at our data, you know, they're seeing that teachers, you've got three percent there, principals ten percent, and then you're seven percent in other. You know, what ways are we going to be strategically enhancing those partnerships? You know, what does it look like?
Do you want to speak to Salem State?
The?
Fellowship.
The fellowship program? So we are engaging in a partnership with Salem State to, how many fellows?
We started with three.
We started with three this year, but we're expanding it to...
I don't know the number.
I want to say close to twenty.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and we, we're doing it in high-risk areas, in science, mathematics, special education will be the target, and that's going to be a paid, obviously fellowship is paid, and so that's going to be a wonderful opportunity for those students, and I believe the stipend is eleven thousand dollars.
Salem State, when we met with them, they themselves have expanded the opportunities for fellowships. Initially, it was for the four-plus-one program, which is the four years of bachelor's plus one year of master's, and by the time they complete that fifth year, they have their They have expanded it to all their education programs, including special education. They also have talked about the counselor, a school adjustment counselor, masters, and possibly expanding it to that as well. Right now, we're focusing in on, as Ken said, math, science, special education.
And it's pretty, it's highly competitive. There are a lot of districts out there at this point in time really going this route to, to engage and entice teachers into the district and to sort of build your own.
Yeah, I remember the conversation, it was very...
It's growing, it's growing in leaps and bounds, and I think it's going to be a wonderful partnership. Right now, this year, we have three in the district, and the partner school is Soul Anderson.
Excellent. Now, are we having a conversation with North Shore Community College? Are we working on developing pathways through them? Because if that's...
Yeah, early college, absolutely.
Yeah, so we have folks going to North Shore, teach, or do we have our paraprofessional folks, do we go access credits through North Shore to get to Salem State? Or is it ideally for that particular fellowship, it's already, like you said, it's competitive, I can imagine, so.
There's already a connection between North Shore and Salem State, and with early college work, we definitely have an education pathway that we're looking at and working on and to expand. We're talking about future teacher clubs and things like that to grow our own teachers from our own students.
Okay, thank you. Member Capola?
Are we, are we going to expand to any other colleges that are for teaching, like Merrimack or Endicott?
I know that Merrimack has been approached about fellowships. Merrimack, because of where it's located, they do a lot of their fellowships in Lawrence and the surrounding communities by the school. The transportation is, is a, not a concern, but it's a challenge.
For students.
For students.
But if we had students from Lynn, I, I know of a student who's, you know, wrapping up her bachelor's degree, and she did do her student teaching at Drewitt, so I know of one anyways, and maybe we have others that could come in on it and, you know, even if they had to transfer to Salem, you know, for their master's program. But the other question is, what was the date that we used for this data? Was it the first day of school? Is it October first?
So, the comparative, you know, the nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one is the end of the school year, and the data that you have for the most recent data is through October of twenty-twenty-one. That was a, so if we, you know, shut it down, you know, in October of twenty-twenty-one, what does the staff in the Lynn Public Schools look like? We took it from there.
Right, that's the data I'm looking for.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Great, thank you. Next on the agenda, Dr. Tuttwiler, is another, not a, not a presentation, a, a report.
Just a, just an update.
Thank you, an update.
I've got to be able to read the words here. Responding to, it was two meetings ago, member Castellanos asked for an update on attendance, and I appreciate the request because, as we know, this is, attendance is one of the indicators under the student learning goal that were approved at the beginning of the school year. Again, philosophically, we see attendance as a key factor and indicator of wellness and student success. Conversely, we see absenteeism as a risk factor and potentially reflective of deeper issues that require support and intervention. Obviously, this year, the current school year, is much different than the other two years listed in the data set that you were provided, as we are still in the throes of a global pandemic. Accordingly, there are new and different reasons why a student might miss school. This is not an excuse. Instead, it is a call to action and understanding on our part to make sure that we're partnering with families and caregivers to address the problems of the time. In advance of this evening's meeting, you received a simplified set of data on the average daily attendance across all schools for the first quarter of the school year. As we indicated, we would do in terms of determining success toward the attendance goal for the year, we backed out absences due to nurse or doctor-ordered quarantine. Those absences are coded, which allows for easier data gathering. We actually did that last year also. The current year is highlighted in green, and to the right of the two, to the, to the left, excuse me, are the two previous years of data when we were in person, pre-pandemic years, for comparison. You can see clearly that for most schools, we were at or slightly below where we were during pre-pandemic years. By way of reminder, we've developed and continue to refine a robust effort to secure strong attendance for all students, and at the core, we embrace establishing equity understanding. Our focus is the students in the margin, and they deserve our efforts and our attention. And again, designing a framework that positions absenteeism as the symptom of a larger problem. In practice, this happens proactively through the caring school's social-emotional learning curriculum at the elementary level and advisory at the secondary level. We have clear expectations around outreach when attendance problems are small to prevent them from becoming larger. What is more, wellness teams are in place in every school, as they have been for a few years now. They meet and review data and determine intervention strategies. We are fortunate in that we are meaningfully partnered with local agencies such as Lynn Community Health, who can provide deeper, more sustained supports if need be in a particular situation. I plan to keep the committee updated on a quarterly basis on attendance and any notable trends that emerge, but given that there was a request and we just completed the first quarter of the school year, wanted to give you a sense for where we stand now.
Member Sadoway, and then Member Castellanos.
Thank you, Dr. Tuttwiler, for the information. So, what I would have liked to see, and I know it wasn't put out this way, but if remote would have made a difference in these numbers, so if we had twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one school year data, that would have been helpful.
It's easy to put in there. It's just not, you know, for lack of better expression, it's not apples to apples.
I understand.
But, but, yeah, we can, we can include that in the next.
Do you, do you recall any of the data, or you haven't run it to really honestly speak on it?
I mean, in terms of attendance rates, many of our schools exceeded, I mean, the attendance rates were extremely high. attendance rates were extremely high.
So if we had that...
Facto Larry is a case in point. They had their highest attendance rates ever.
So, so if we had a remote component, it, it could have been helpful this year?
We're not allowed to.
I know, because we didn't have the, yeah, we didn't have the, the thing set up.
Uh, no, you're, you're not permitted to.
Not permitted to.
I thought we could have had remote if we had the infrastructure set up with the principal, no?
Oh, you mean an online school?
Yes.
Like an additional online school, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Member Castellanos.
Uh, Dr. Tuttweiler, thank you so much. Um, now you can see the robust effort, um, in the wellness and intervention strategies with the investments that we made over the past, um, you know, term. It's, you know, it's, it's really apparent. Um, I really, you know, I appreciate you, you showing us this and allowing us to, to have this, this data set because attendance is very important, um, especially as we're making this transition. Um, and it really shows, um, just how, how, how much effort our staff and the folks in our district really, you know, go out for outreach and engagement. It's a very important piece, and when I look at those numbers, and as you mentioned, Facto Larry, it's, um, it's incredible. I just, the CRA numbers, so could we get those eventually? If you could send those separately, just to see what, what that looks like. Um, and also, I would eventually like to hear from our, our attendant supervisors, and I know they've been very busy. I think it's very important to kind of get the, when we talk about wellness and intervention strategies, you know, when you break down each school and, you know, you look at, you know, Harrington at 91%, you know, those are still, you know, what, what, what are some of our target goals for us? What do you, what do you, what do you see for this year? What are, what are our, what's our, I guess, what are, what is our, 100% we would love to, but what's our target?
I mean, you know, that's what we strive for.
Yeah.
Uh, 100%, but what's realistic?
Yeah.
Uh, in this context, uh, is 90, north of 90%, which is why we set that goal to be at least 90% district-wide, and each individual school to be 90% or is aiming for at least that. Uh, I just want to underscore, and it's no secret, I think you all, we all understand that, you know, in that narrative, when I sort of framed, uh, this data, I talked about the year being unique, and there are different reasons why a student might miss school this year as compared to previous years. So for example, uh, you know, a, a student, uh, who, you know, is not in a class where there's a positive COVID case, uh, but hears of, or a family hears of, an uptick, might keep that, that family might keep that student home out of fear of their child, uh, contracting COVID. That wasn't, uh, an issue in the 1920, well, prior to, um, from the September, November 1920, or the 18, 19 school year. And so, um, you know, the strategies that we're employing, some of, you know, some of, many of them are, uh, strategies that we've, that we've always done and that are effective, uh, but this is a unique time, uh, and there's, there are just other variables that come into play, and we're working, uh, really hard to try to, uh, try to address that.
We're going back to trauma. I think there's a lot of trauma right now in first half, for families, a lot of folks dealing with trauma.
Absolutely.
And the wellness intervention piece, I do look forward to hearing from, I know, I speak with those, those folks, the social workers and the people who are on the ground, and I appreciate the work that they're doing. It's, it's very, it's a very, we're very difficult times right now. We're in the holidays now, and we're going through, you know, these, these really rough patches of transitions. Um, but I do believe in our staff, and I believe in what you guys are doing, and it's important to continue, um, I, I would like to continue the, to have this data, you know, every quarter, we, we kind of review and troubleshoot, see what we could do. I also appreciate maybe informally, if I could meet, you know, if I have to go and check in, I'll meet with you guys separately. It'd be, you know, important to kind of just continue to see their attendance. I know, because you guys are doing so much work, so I'm aware of the, the outreach, uh, for, for what I do for a living. I, I see it, like, I see it on the ground. So, we come here, like, I already, we already have had plenty of conversations, so I appreciate it.
Brian, the other thing that, um, the team, the attendance team, a, a primary goal of theirs this year is to build their community partnerships. So one of the things that is newly established this year for the attendance team is a monthly meeting with, um, DCF, um, supervisors, and both are presenting cases in those meetings. So there's that ongoing collaboration, and building more systems like that with other community agencies has become another goal within this, in building on wellness teams.
I was just saying, I'm, I'm aware, yeah. I see, I'm in a regional position now, too, where we're actually, I see other districts, I see how Lawrence does it, I'm seeing how Lowell does it, Boston Public Schools does it. Um, attendance is very important. Um, for what I do for a living, when kids go missing or absent, um, first thing we start to notice is, you know, you know, what's that attendance look like? What happened? They start asking questions, we start doing outreach, um, and sometimes the kids in our system, they might not have parents, and the social workers are, you know, the Commonwealth have those kids, and, and where, where our partners in the school systems are even that much more important. The school social workers and the folks, teachers noticing, you know, speaking up, you know, hey, this kid's missing out of the day, like, getting, getting everyone on the same page is important, um, with attendance, and the earlier, the better.
Yeah, I agree.
But thank you.
Any other questions? On to the next, uh, matter of business, new, new business ratification of votes on the policy subcommittee meeting held on December 7th and December 9th.
Yes, thank you. So we have had a vote in, uh, each of those subcommittee meetings, policy subcommittee meetings, um, on December 7th, and then this evening, December 7th, uh, the committee voted to approve the, uh, Lynn public schools high school admissions policy, um, and recommended it to the full committee. So I think we could, uh, have a motion for the full committee to adopt.
Second.
So motion and second, and then reply as a roll call?
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the vote this evening was to, uh, approve the changes to the Lynn Public Schools policies that were set forth, uh, to us, uh, and to refer, uh, those policies that were placed on hold, um, to, uh, to keep those policies on hold and refer them to the next committee.
Second.
Uh, so, uh, motion and second made, roll call?
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Next on the agenda was a request for executive session and, um...
Personnel Subcommittee.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's not on, uh, I'm sorry, I missed it. Yep. Uh, Personnel Subcommittee, please.
Yes, we did have, um, a vote on the Personnel Subcommittee in regards to the survey, um, to read back. Are you able to do that, Deb? It was a lengthy, uh, motion, if you could just read it back.
Senator Sadowite made a motion to approve the school committee survey on the superintendent as presented by Member Gailey to be released to the staff on January 26th, and the family section to be released to families on January 5th through 13th, with a reminder email with the data to be provided to the Personnel Subcommittee to be presented to the full committee on March 2022, and recommend to the full committee.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion made and a second, requires a roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Member Sadowite.
I just wanted to make sure if Dr. Tuttweiler wants to do his, um, superintendent's report first, or do you want to go into executive session?
And I'd like to make a recommendation prior to that, and let's see if the committee is, is, would be amenable to this, particularly with the ongoing, um, recommendations for new attorneys. Uh, I know we got, uh, an additional amount of resumes, uh, and, uh, I would like to make a recommendation that, um, instead of going into executive session, that we put this forward, uh, and put it on for, um, potentially interviews of all of the, either all or a number of the, the, um, recommend, uh, the resumes that have come in, uh, and to start to move the process forward. Uh, instead of going into executive session, having a discussion on that, there will be a new committee coming in in several weeks. This is our last meeting, and, um, I think it, an opportunity to table it, uh, but more importantly, to put on the agenda moving forward, that, um, you know, as we all, I think, believe here, that it's time to try and, uh, move forward on getting an attorney on staff and to have, uh, we have a number of resumes that I think we can take a look at and reflect on, but I think to really get the input and impact of what the, all of those, uh, that have applied bring to the table, that, uh, planning early interviews from the full committee for those, um, for those members would be, um, what I think would be, would be my recommendation. Member Gailey.
Um, Mayor, how many applications do we have? We got three in a packet, and then...
I think we're at least at eight. That's a good ques, so there's, there's, um, the resumes we got prior to this are also included in what would be, uh, any of those that we would be, uh, taking a look at, so I, I, I...
Is there any way we can get a list of the names so we know if we have the right packet that we're going to go through?
Uh, yeah, we can work on that. I...
Thank you.
Mary, can you? Yes, Member, uh, Castellanos and Member Nicholson. Is that, so we'll get that list, uh, I apologize that I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's, I think it's eight. Uh, I don't know if you have it now, Mary?
I'm checking.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gailey.
I was going to ask a similar question up for the packet that I did get. Were there additional, so you said eight?
I don't know, we'll get the number.
Okay.
I know we got an additional amount, when we put the RFP out again, or the, excuse me, the request for, uh, resumes, we got an additional, uh, I think, three. Um, so I think if we can get that number, that would be helpful.
Uh, just before, you know, we really, you know, obviously, there is a timeline, and we do respect, you know, we, we do need to get this process going. So I think, getting the, the interview process, um, going, making sure that we're, we're, we're moving forward, um, in respect to, to the union, and in respect to their contract, um, because there's been waiting, you know, it's been, it's, it's time. Um, they're coming post-pandemic, and I think they, you know, I think it's just, it's very important to make sure that we respect, um, that process and get these interviews, and also, and fairness for, for the committee, for the new committee coming on. We need, we need to have our, our, our team in place while we make this transition, as, you know, mayor-elect, on January 3rd, our inauguration, we're going to go through inauguration. We want to make sure that we're getting this, getting this done, so...
Uh, and just to follow up on that, I think it's a great point. I would suggest that that should be one of the first, um, um, business matters that come forward for the new committee is to take this on right away, so that there's...
Absolutely.
... ability to do interviews, and then start to get someone in place that can help the new committee, um, move forward, make a decision on this, and then address the, um, the, um, the negotiations as well. Member Sadowite?
I, I...
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, Member Nicholson and then Member Sadowite.
Yeah, and it looks like Ms. Jules has a...
Yes.
There is a total of eight.
There's eight, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to, uh, echo what, uh, the mayor said, Member Castellanos. I think, um, you know, maybe we can suggest that the materials and the list we distributed to the, the new committee, um, and that we can try to come on January 13th with a sense of who we want to interview, and then just schedule them right away, with the goal of trying to make a decision on January 27th, um, so that we are ready to hit this term with the school committee.
And it wouldn't prevent the committee from doing a special meeting to, within that period of time, to actually take interviews and get into an executive session and make some discussions.
Exactly, right.
Member Sadowite?
I just wanted to, I, I know Brian is on the negotiations subcommittee, so he, he, you're aware that we are in, in discussions with, with, with different units, so it's not like we haven't been, uh, meeting. So I know you had said that it's, it's not feared to the, uh, to the unions and to us, but, you know, we, we, we're, we understand we're going through a process, but we still have a job to do, and that's what we've been doing. So, um, I, I appreciate your, your concerns, but I, I just don't want that to make it seem like we haven't been doing what we need to do on the other end of things.
Any other discussions? If, if, uh, it'd be entertaining, a motion, uh, to, uh, to table tonight, but with the parameters of that, the, the first order of business come to the next year, and I think with two, a couple of the new members here, making sure the new members get the list and the information needed, so that they'll be ready to make those decisions, and get, get interviews done quickly in the first of the year. So if someone would like to make a motion to that effect, um...
Make a motion to table.
Um, the request for executive session in regards to the school committee attorney.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes.
And we'll make sure that that information gets to the, the new members, so that they have, so they'll be prepared on, um, as, as, as January 3rd approaches. Um, next on the agenda is, um, superintendent's report. Dr. Tuttweiler?
Yep. So in your packets, uh, there are the dates for, uh, the 2022, um, season, uh, for lack of better expression, and also, uh, an enrollment report, uh, for beginning December 1st, uh, and then I have a superintendent's report, uh, and some things I would like to say. Um, so this week, an incident involving a student in possession of an authentic-looking weapon that was later determined to be a toy has shaken not just the school at which the incident happened, but perhaps the entire community. When events such as these happen, the response should include, but not be limited to, reflection, outreach, and opportunities to process. Over the past 48 hours, there have been opportunities where each has happened in substantive ways. The reflection, which includes clear opportunities for feedback, has yielded concrete steps for improvement in safety, response, and communication. Outreach has taken the form of meetings and virtual, in a virtual community forum, and processing will happen in ongoing fashion through clinical support, classroom activities, and meetings. The event ended without physical harm to any staff member or student. Nonetheless, we are intimately aware that harm can take on many forms. There might not have been physical harm, but there was definitely trauma. The focus of our efforts in the school and beyond will include sensitivity in response to that reality. There are already supports in place at the school and general vigilance across the district. The school will be creating specific and thoughtful experiences to address the needs of those closest to the incident. In total, while this event has definitely had an impact, I remain confident that the community will emerge stronger as a result. That is, after all, that this, after all, is the mark of a strong community. Indeed, another mark of a strong community is the depth and quality of its leadership. In this way, I want to extend my deepest appreciation to the members of the Lynn School Committee who will be moving on to the next chapters of their life. Uh, that's when I keep going. Uh, Mayor McGee, Mr. Mayor, your steady hand of leadership has delivered the city to a better place than when you found it. The result of your attention to detail, willingness to confront deeply challenging issues, has resulted in the needle moving, so to speak, in every department in your purview. I have found your patience remarkable. To be clear, patience is not the enemy of urgency. You've clearly dealt with many issues with a sense of urgency. The way that you look at, analyze, and understand challenging issues from various perspectives requires incredible patience and resolve. This quality has proven most effective. Wherever the next chapter for you might be, it is my sincere hope that we, we remain partnered in some way, as being your colleague has helped me become a better leader. Mr. Ford, I've never called you 40, but I feel like this is your last meeting.
(laughter)
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that.
Feel free.
Forty. Uh, gone with you is decades of experience, knowledge, and know-how. These qualities lead to an informed perspective, which you have always demonstrated. Among the many things I appreciate, appreciate about your leadership on this committee is the fact that you wear your values on your sleeve. Very rarely was there a time when I had to guess what you were thinking or what you might say in relation to a particular issue. It was always students and staff first, period. Simple, yet profound. I think I know you well enough to say that I am certain that I will be seeing you fairly regularly in the coming months and years. You can't stay away. This is who you are, and the community is so lucky for that fact.
Thank you.
Attorney Sadowite, for four years now, I have respected how you've performed your role, but in particular, the aspect involving your connectedness to the community. I'm not sure how you know everybody, and I do know, I do mean everybody, but you do, and you've leveraged your knowledge of everybody in this community to inform decisions that you make in this space. I have incredible respect for that. I also have incredible respect for how you've used your knowledge of the law and all related matters to help people, to help some of our most vulnerable children. You are... You are a real ally to all members of the community and our neediest in particular. You leave, leave a lasting legacy that reflects cunning skill, getting to the root of a problem and speaking up for those who need you to do it the most. And Mr. Mayor-elect, now, I just want to qualify this, you're staying here, so the comments are a little bit shorter. Mr. Mayor-elect, I suppose this is not really a farewell message to you. I will just say with the utmost sincerity that I look forward to partnering with you and the other members of the committee to continue to push to provide a world-class education for our Linn Public School scholars. We have work to do. We have. We have plaques for each of you. And if Don is listening, we probably should take a photo.
He'll be running in.
I guess you didn't need your tissues.
Thank you.
Mayor.
I'm gonna miss him running in.
I know.
Mr. Mayor?
Forty.
Thank you. Very appreciative leadership.
Should we come up?
Yeah. Come on over. Colleagues. Your moment.
We can have everybody come up. It's a fan, come on.
Yeah, come on. Come on. Sorry, Don. I'm slow. Don't hurry. I want to drag the meeting over.
Yeah, your favorite thing to do, Kevin.
That would be nice.
Make sure you harass him right back.
That would be a good time. We need to do a summer program.
Are we wrapped up now?
Actually, 21.
I know.
Thank you, Kimmer.
You're welcome.
Nice flag.
That is nice.
You got one more thing?
No other, is a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Ford?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor McGee?
Yes. Thank you all very much. It's been an honor and a privilege.
A record. It's a record.
That's super to be true.
Oh, my God.
We did this every Thursday, every Sunday.
Thank you so much.
What a record.